Today's invocation will be given by Father Michael of St. Michael Orthodox Christian Church. If everyone would please silence your cell phones, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father Michael? Yes, sir.
In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, one God in the Holy Trinity, amen. Oh, God, our God, you have adorned us with your image, given us a free will. When you entered the temple in the middle of the feast, our most compassionate master, you taught the wise counsel, who were amazed at your doctrine, for David says, "Come to me, children, and I will teach you the fear of the Lord." You also taught the wisdom, Salmon, "Look down even now, Maker and Creator upon our authorities, the mayor of this honorable city council, and grant them wisdom, understanding, that they may learn your holy will. Warm there with heart in love for you and for their citizen fellow. Guide them on the way of truth and righteousness, keeping their heart from all evil. Unite them in one mind, in one heart, and let their mutual brotherly love abide in their midst. Bless them, for they're doing good and useful things." We pray thee, most merciful Lord, our God, the God of every compassion and consolation, do not turn away your face from them, and all of us here present, nor denies us our longing, for we have set our hope in thee. Grant to you, to our great city of women, our country, and all of us peace and serenity, and unity and spirit, and concord and fruitful action, and all those things needful for our temporal and eternal life. You know our needs, and you grant and fulfill our requests even before you make them, for you are the God of mercy and gracious in strength, and to you are due glory, honor, and worship, to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, amen."
God bless you.
United States of America.
May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
And Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
All right, today we have four proclamations and one presentation. First, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of September as sepsis awareness month. Accepting will be Jaime Wright, and did I get that right? Jamie, okay, sorry about that. And Carrie Singleton, Dr. Laura Jacoby, am I getting everybody, Mary Goodwin, Lisa Johnson, and anybody that I didn't call that's with you, y'all please come up and receive.
We'll get a photograph, and then y'all have a chance to speak.
Thank you guys for what you do.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Pleasure. Thank y'all for being here. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So much.
Yeah.
What are we doing?
Good, how are you, Holly? Good. Good to see you.
You'll stay there for me? And one, two, three? Good job.
Good afternoon, Beaumont City Council. Thank you for recognizing the importance of sepsis awareness. Sepsis occurs when the body response to infection causes widespread infection, leading tissue damage, organ failure, and potential death. Early detection and treatment is crucial, as they can significantly improve outcomes. Globally, sepsis is responsible for one out of five deaths worldwide, surpassing cancer. In the United States, it affects 1.7 million annually, and is the third-leading cause of death in hospitals. Economically, sepsis is the most expensive condition, causing estimated $62 billion annually to the hospital and skilled nursing care, according to the CDC. At Christus Southeast Texas, we are committed to continuing sepsis harm reduction effort, implementing evidence-based practice for sepsis, focus on early detection, nurse-driven protocols, and collaborations between nursing, infection preventionist, sepsis coordinators, as helpful to drive the changes we make. And I'd like to leave you with this, remember, infection prevention is sepsis prevention, and the number-one way to prevent infection is to wash your hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing September 20th, 2024, as Southeast Texas Veterans Stand Down Day for homeless veterans. Accepting will be Bonnie Brooks, Bruce Hamilton, and Damian Bennett, and the Southeast Texas Stand Down Committee members.
Everybody look right here. One, two, three. Two, three. Right, thank you.
City Council, we thank you today, all of you members, especially those who are going to be involved on Friday, September 20th. We wanted to send you out a reminder today to show up at the Beaumont Civic Center at 8:30 in the morning when we will have our program. One of the reasons for the stand-down is that it's a thank you to all of our sponsors and volunteers who are really responsible to our veterans, our veterans who have served our communities in various ways, not only in combat, but sometime with just support for other military individuals and administratively. And without the generosity and the support of our community, we would not have been, we would not be able to provide the assistance we provide. So we thank you for all of that. We do want to say real quick a quote from one of my favorite movies, which is not a classic, but it has a scene in there where an elementary school teacher is talking to his class, he's encouraging them to be involved in the community, to give back, and one of the kids raises his hands and says, "So, what do you do to give back?" And the teacher looks at him and says, "I show up." And that's really the true thing of everybody, to give something, is to show up, and no matter what your talent or time will involve, to give something back to our community. You never know when it makes a difference. Our veterans certainly appreciate it. Last year, we had 607 individuals come through the Civic Center during this event. We're, next year, we're planning to have five of these at various around the region. This is going to be, we have two more left. We have the Beaumont and the Jasper Stand Down, and so we appreciate your support so very, very much. So we look forward to seeing you there on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing September and October as National Ovarian and Breast Cancer Awareness Months. Accepting will be Ms. Regina Rogers, the founder of Gift of Life, and Mrs. Norma Sampson, the executive director, and any board members that you have with you.
Thank you very much.
How are you?
Yes, appreciate y'all.
How are you doing? Good to see you. Y'all making rounds today.
Thank you guys, appreciate y'all.
How are you?
Appreciate y'all. Thank you for what you do.
Hello, how are you doing?
How are you doing? Thank you for what y'all do.
Good to see you. Yeah, yeah, I know. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
Okay. All right, we have two cameras, so give me just a second. Okay, everybody look right here. And one, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, let's do it again. And one, two, three. Okay, good job. One more camera, stay right there. One, two, three. Perfect.
Oh, Maureen, you should have come out.
Well, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor and Councilmembers, for once again coming before everyone to share our lifesaving message. This is our 14th year that we're celebrating the Julie Richardson Proctor Ribbon Run. The proceeds, it is a fundraiser and a awareness initiative, and all the funds remain local and help women in our communities, those that can't afford health insurance. This year alone, through our partnerships, the benevolency of so many individuals, our program has been able to diagnose 18 women with breast cancer. And thanks to your support, and again, businesses and like-minded individuals, our lifesaving services that provide free breast health screenings, diagnostic mammograms, ultrasounds, and biopsies are provided to women who simply have nowhere else to turn. So thank you for the support. We encourage everyone, we handed out our little brochures, and we even tempted you with a cookie, so that if you will lace up to save lives with us, anyone whose breast, ovarian, gynological, battling cancer, or a cancer survivor, they're our guest. They get to bring someone with them and have a good time and walk, and we encourage each one of you to join us as well. You can register, form a team, and support this lifesaving initiative that will affect women throughout Southeast Texas. And more importantly, too, this fund, as I said, stay local, and this is what we encourage everyone, please share. These are our free screenings, it is some eligibility based on income, but those that are eligible, they do receive our free services. We provide transportation, translation services, and a myriad of other ancillary support. So this is the message, this is why we're here, and this is our sustainability for 30 years, because of everyone else and your generosity and belief in our program, along with these wonderful ambassadors, from our event chairs to our angels, our board president and officers have been with us for innumerable years. And so thank you for believing in our cause and allowing us to make a difference throughout Southeast Texas. Always for the best part, it's here in Beaumont, Texas, our community, so thank you so much.
Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the month of September as Neonatal Nurses Intensive Care Unit Month. Accepting will be Ms. Lacey Goodman, Clinical Director of the NICU Services at Christus St. Elizabeth, Texas Hospital. Bring anybody that is with you.
Right, stay for me, wait, one more. Oh, she's going down there, you can get in. Okay, and one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much to the City Council for having us today in honor of NICU Nurses Week. So Neonatal Nurses Week is designated to honor the hard work and dedication of neonatal nurses and neonatal nurse practitioners who provide lifesaving and life-changing care every day to infants who are born prematurely or with other medical conditions requiring critical care. Christus Southeast Texas St. Elizabeth Neonatal Intensive Care Unit is a 14-bed Level 3 NICU designated by the state of Texas. We serve approximately 300 newborns each year. We are staffed with 30 dedicated and talented neonatal nurses and four neonatal nurse practitioners. We are proud to honor this amazing team and the 24/7 care that they provide for the smallest and most vulnerable citizens of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have a presentation, we have the communication update from the City of Beaumont Communication Department.
Good afternoon, everyone. And this week's announcements help keep Beaumont beautiful by joining on our biannual community cleanup this coming Saturday, September 21st, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. You can pre-register at beaumonttexas.gov/cleanup, or simply show up on Saturday at the John Paul Davis Community Center on East Lucas to be a part of the Great American Cleanup. October is Fire Prevention Month, and you can learn all about fire safety and prevent and how to prevent it from our own Beaumont firefighters during their upcoming Fire Festival. The free event is Saturday, October 5th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Fire Museum of Texas on Walnut Street in Beaumont. Enjoy food, games, bounce houses, local vendors, prizes, and live demonstrations from our very own Beaumont firefighters. Ready to play some disc golf? If you didn't already know, there's a disc golf course at Terrell Park, just steps away from the nature center. Whether you're new to the game or you've been tossing discs for years, we've got everything you need to get started or up your game. You can swing by the shop to check out their awesome selection of discs. Get ready for the 9th Annual Oktoberfest, coming up Saturday, October 5th, from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Rogers Park. It's a family favorite, with polka and live music, local food trucks, a large beer garden. Bring your lawn chairs and blankets, admission to the event is free and open to the public. And it's the season for ghouls, goblins, and ghosts, and the Jefferson Theater is gearing up for a spooky October with the return of its 13 nights of Halloween. Tickets are on sale now and include Halloween classics such as Ghostbusters, Poltergeist, The Rocky Horror Picture Show, Young Frankenstein, The Nightmare Before Christmas, and The Texas Chainsaw Massacre. Tickets are just $6 for adults, $4 for children, 12 and under, so hang on to your popcorn and check out all 13 nights of Halloween next month at the Jefferson Theater. And that's all for this week's announcements.
Thank you. And for those that are here for proclamations and presentations, and you'd like to leave, now's the time to do so, and thank you for coming. At the close of the meeting today, City Council recessed into executive session, considering matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code to wit specifically, Claim of Wesley Coleman and Night Strike Ministries, Inc., and Beaumont Professional Firefighters Local 399 Negotiation Grievance. Now we'll move into public comments. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda, regular agenda items 1 through 10, or any other topic. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, your city and state. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. Note, as council and mayor, we cannot respond to any comments being made at this time, because they are not posted items, but somebody from our office will contact you.
Brenda Beadle, 11135 Cole Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Beadle, my address is 11135 Cole, Beaumont, Texas. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and my previous coworkers. I'm here on the behalf of the Beaumont Botanical Gardens to discuss the expired lease between the city and the gardens. In May of this year, several board members, including myself, met with the City Manager, Williams, and the Assistant City Manager, Mr. Ellis, concerning the renewal of our lease and management agreement. And a request, we request, at that time, we requested a monthly payment of $10,000 a month, and to reinstate a five-year lease, multi-year lease. I was informed in July that the city proposed a payment of $1,500 a month and a one-year lease to begin in October. Now, our current lease expired in August. I'm requesting that this amount be increased to no less than $5,000 a month in a five-year lease, a multi-year lease. A multi-year lease assures our donors, because we are dependent on donations and fundraisers, our donors, that the city is committed to our success. As you are aware, a multi-year lease agreement contains a non-appropriation clause, which commits funding for the current budget year only. For information, we do not have a 99-year lease like the art museum. The Beaumont Council Garden Clubs was dissolved in 2022, and an independent nonprofit, Beaumont Botanical Gardens, Inc., was organized, and it is governed by a Board of Community Leaders. Since the formation of the botanical gardens, over 500,000 has been raised from donations and grants for specific projects. We have made major improvements to the grounds from these generous donations and grants. Beaumont Botanical Gardens also has established a popular Ghosts, Goblins, and Gardens Festival, held the last Saturday in October, this will be our fourth year. Last year, we had approximately 2,000 families and children and families attend. This year, we will host our second concert on the grounds with the Symphony of Southeast Texas. All of these events are free to the public and are supported by the generous donations from local companies and individuals. Botanical Gardens, we have three paid employees, one director and two groundskeepers. We have volunteers that help in the office to answer the phones and greet visitors. Some of our volunteers work in the gardens, but that help is limited. The requested funds will be used to offset operating costs and to hire additional personnel. We would greatly appreciate your consideration of this request, as we are working tirelessly to make the botanical gardens a success.
Thank you.
I'm Tootsie Crutchfield, 5965 Honeysuckle, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, I am Tootsie Crutchfield. I live at 5965 Honeysuckle for 50-plus years. You will tell from my remarks that Brenda and I obviously did not have a conversation beforehand, I will be echoing some of what she had to say. So I currently have the honor of serving as President of Beaumont Botanical Gardens. And 23 months ago, the vote was taken to change the governance to our new nonprofit corporation. And during this brief span, dedicated volunteers have managed to raise, as she said, the half million dollars through grants, private donations, memberships, and fundraising events. We hired an executor one year ago. Prior to her arrival, all of these things, including the management of the gardens, was done by volunteers. The grants and a major donation have gone to the physical rehabilitation of the gardens for years of previous damage done by floods, freezes, droughts, and the wild hogs, always on a rampage. None of these funds went to our operating budget, they went to the projects at hand. So in addition to maintaining a haven of peace and tranquility for people of all ages, from all walks of life, admission-free, the new events have been developed, and she alluded to our Ghosts, Goblins, and Gardens, the concert symphonies in the gardens. Again, that word, those words, "admission-free," and this has been because of the generosity of donors and the dedicated volunteers who have stepped forward to produce. Across Texas, the botanical gardens are usually on city-owned property and receive considerable support from these cities. Botanical gardens are major destinations for local citizens and tourists, most charge admission. We in Beaumont are not equipped, because of staff limitations, to administer this activity, hence, again, those words, "admission-free." Gardens are in a unique position to provide education about horticulture, environmental concerns, and subjects pertaining to nature in general. Rather than competing with other cultural institutions in an area, gardens complement these complexes. While the actual gardens were established in Terrell Park in the 1960s, and the new governing body, BBG, is an infant corporation in the process of developing supporters and an audience, volunteer dedication is a key to the success of the past few years. Looking to the future, I think is critical.
Daniel Campisi, 2095 Dallin Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, my name is Daniel Campisi. I live at 2095 Dallin Road here in Beaumont, Texas. Good afternoon, Mayor West, council members, city manager, city clerk, and members of the community. Today, I propose an amendment to Chapter 12 of the City of Beaumont's Code of Ordinances to introduce a new section that imposes civil penalties for interference with child custody. This will support the children and parents in our community by providing a straightforward way to encourage parents to comply with their court-ordered visitation agreements. Legislation has recognized the ongoing challenges that families face each year throughout Texas with custody interference violations, and has proposed a practical solution. HB 969, which took effect on September 1st, 2023, allows municipalities and counties to impose civil penalties of up to $500 for violations of Section 25.03 of the Texas Penal Code, which addresses interference with child custody. Previously, these violations only led to felony charges and up to six months in jail. Now, this bill provides the City of Beaumont with a valuable new tool to address these issues more effectively. The data from the Beaumont Police Department clearly shows that criminal penalties alone aren't solving the problem. From September 2019 to September 2024, there have been 1,200 there have been 1,200 confirmed reports of child custody interference, but only 70 led to criminal reports being filed, and none of those cases resulted in a conviction. Given the lack of prosecutions, it's clear that criminal penalties alone aren't solving the problem. That's why we need a more practical and effective approach, one that prioritizes the well-being of our children and ensures stability for families. The civil penalties outlined in HB 969 offer Beaumont this alternative. This new approach will significantly reduce the emotional toll on children and parents by making family exchanges more predictable and stable, while avoiding the harsher consequences of criminal penalties for parents who violate a court-ordered visitation agreement. I urge the City of Beaumont to adopt this ordinance. By doing so, we hold violators accountable and show that our community recognizes the problem and will no longer tolerate these violations against our youth and families. Additionally, implementing this ordinance offers an opportunity to reinvest in our community by strengthening the bonds between families and future generations, ensuring long-term well-being of our city. The time to act is now. Let's not wait for more children and families to suffer the consequences of inaction. I hope that by raising awareness of the city's statistics. Thank you.
Jeff Neesum, 1307 Wall, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Council. Jeff Neesum, President, Beaumont Professional Firefighter, Local 399. I'm here today on behalf of our members of Local 399 and the citizens of Beaumont. We're fed up with the lack of leadership or vision of our fire department, and we're fed up with the lack of manpower without a plan to fix it. Our members are ready to make sure every citizen knows what we're dealing with. No matter how you look at the numbers or move things around, the fire department has spent around $2 million or more on overtime than budgeted for in the past fiscal year. The root cause of this is the lack of staffing. In our August monthly report, the Beaumont Fire Department showed to be 17 civil service firefighters short. This doesn't include EMS personnel, which would put us closer to 30 firefighters short. We are one department now, and our firefighters ride on all of this equipment. So the shortage of fire and EMS personnel together is important to consider as it's the reason the overtime has skyrocketed. There's supposed to be a plan to reduce that overtime. So our question to the chief and to all of you is what is that plan without adding additional personnel? Because there isn't a way to add the number of personnel by October 1st. We've communicated to you that the department has continued to struggle. This union has made suggestions for over three years to fix these problems. And now, after all our hiring and retention problems, you push off our contract negotiations until after our contract expires. Nobody in any organization conducts business that way. The members of Local 399 are asking all of you to stop putting us last on your list of priorities. We've started getting vocal in the community and will continue for the sake of our citizens. This has gone on too long to continue dealing with the games and the lack of professional conversations. It's gone on so long that it's affecting the budget and the citizens, which is unfair to them. Please make public safety a priority and do better by your firefighters in our community.
Thank you.
Albert Harrison, 1240 Ashley, Beaumont, Texas.
Albert Harrison, 1240 Ashley, Mayor West, City Council, City Staff, other concerned citizens. My complaints today are based around animal control. There's a gentleman, my name was Sam, that lived at 1115 Ewing Street. He has four dogs inside his house. Animal control has been called by me on numerous occasions because he lets the dogs out. He comes in my yard and dropped the feces, urine, everything else. Now, the problem basically is that he does this in the wee-wee hours of the night. I ain't trying to get up and catch nobody with no dog dropping feces in my yard. My problem basically with this is that I've been tested by the Veterans Administration Hospital for 526 different substances. The substances that I'm allergic to are dried animal feces, dried animal, cat and dog feces and urine. So this is a problem for me. Now, my understanding for animal control, the City of Beaumont does not have at least police law pertaining to cats. But they have approximately 10 or more cats that's roaming around at that porch under my house. And I'm tired of getting waken up 2:00, 3:00 in the morning by cats fighting under my house. So I'm encouraged that City of Beaumont to either do something pertaining to cats because they're roaming around the city. I don't know what to say about it. Another thing I want to complain about is that since 2009, I had two trashcans in my residence. When I stayed on McLean Street, when I stayed on Center Street, when I stayed on Ewing Street, when I stayed on Oakland Street, those trashcans travel with me. All of a sudden, I heard a noise out of my back door. This gentleman was taking one of the trashcans that I had in my yard, saying I was only paying for one trashcan. Maybe I was told I was paying for a trashcan. But come to find out, I was not. Then I called to say, give me another trashcan. They say they don't have any. I get a friend of mine, an attorney friend of mine, that lives on Thomas Street to call, and his wife to call. The City of Beaumont got trashcans then. Another friend of mine, they go on McLean Street to call. So what I'm saying is, it sounded like discrimination to me.
Thank you, sir.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams and staff. My name is Charlie Crabbe. I live at 928 East Drive. It's another nice day in Beaumont, our town. Summer temperature is high. Fall is slow to come. I appraised fall coming last meeting, and it failed me. Summer came back. We sure need to get a handle on water accounting. Surely, there's a spreadsheet showing numbers to explain the situation. Due to the high cost of the fire department, it needs to be evaluated to determine if we have overspending on equipment and manpower. I believe the city has kept up on equipment and training. Can the equipment and manpower be rearranged as to be as efficient and less expensive? Since we have so many firefighters here today, I'd like to mention a couple of rent houses. In the last 10 years, I've had fires, and they were small fires. But then they rekindled, and it was in the middle of the night. So the fire got started again, and there was major damage. And let's see, one of them, there was no debris taken out and put in the yard like I think is a common practice. But it was put in the middle of the house, and the fire went through the middle of the house, through the ceiling. Anyway, I just want them to pay attention to that type of activity. Another assassination attempt against Donald Trump. I just hope the Secret Service and FBI will continue to stop the attempts. In Israel, there is no negotiation with Hamas terrorists. The USA and NATO needs to help Prime Minister Netanyahu and the Israeli armies destroy the Hamas terrorists. Terrorism, it seems, will not negotiate. Ukrainians have surprised President Putin by invading Russia. This needs to be stopped also. We can't fight aggression with slow play, no defense. The fall migration of hummingbirds are visiting southeast Texas on their way to Central America. Do something about the homeless camping. I was good to see that the...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me.
Lexi Williams, 9645 Mapes, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. My name is Lexi Williams, 9645 Mapes Street, Mayor, Council, Staff, and my fellow citizens. The Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau Insider Blog Page displays an article titled "Wheelchair Accessible Guide to Beaumont: Where to Roll Around Town." It features the Art Museum of Southeast Texas, photo ops with murals in downtown Beaumont, and Spittletop Gladys City, as well as a few other sites. These facilities are accessed easily with proper parking access ramps, et cetera. My concern is for those individuals having the desire to roll down their neighborhood or roll to the nearest store. Many of our neighbors lack their own transportation. They may call for rides to the doctor or other important appointments, but for a quick trip to the closest store, they may simply want to roll. There are many areas in our city where one may access a sidewalk or grassy area via a small ramp, and it may go 50 or 100 feet and then run out of sidewalk. In other words, there's no continuity of access. I was riding around on this morning, and I just happened to observe a man who was using his motorized wheelchair to roll down Lucas Street. And he was traveling down Lucas to the shopping center near Lucas and the freeway. I'm sorry, near Lucas and Concord. He had no problem with access. Everything was a clear go. But if that same gentleman wanted to roll towards the library, Willett Library, he would have faced a barrier at the railroad track. Now, it's interesting that it would have been very difficult for him to get to the library without entering into traffic in order to negotiate over. But when you go to the corner of Fourth Street and College, the railroad has built a brand-new ramp disability access across that rail track. I mean, it really is beautiful. I would hope that that would occur in other areas of the city as well, and that the city would address the need for sidewalks. It's a tough deal if you make it up to the sidewalk via ramp, and you go and travel, and then there's nothing. You're kind of stuck, and God forbid if there's rain. Thank you.
Francine Bowman, 5415 Concord Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Could you pass this down to...
That's okay.
Good evening, afternoon, Mayor West. Good to see you again. To all the councilmen, my sister, my sisters. My name is Frances Bowman. Born and raised here in Beaumont, Texas, in Jefferson County. I want to have you look at those pictures of what we have in parts of the city of Beaumont. I reference this to the part of the community, Jefferson County, Beaumont, that has been blighted. It has been redlined. An area which is lacking your attention. According to the Justice Department, I asked them to send me documentation, regulations, rules, and laws. To add to Mrs. Williams' description for the handicap, the disabled people in this city, I've brought you pictures. Pictures are worth a thousand words. There's no access. It is time for this city. You are our leaders. We expect you to do something about it. The American Disability Act is important, and it's written because not all of us need a wheelchair. Not all of us need a cane. Not all of us need crutches. But there are some of us, especially our veterans, who served this country and were decorated, that need motorized wheelchairs. They need parking spots. And I've taken pictures of those, especially at the government offices, one being the library on Lucas. And I compared that with the library on Dalen. I came to the assumption we have a serious problem. Is it class? Is it race? Or is it gender? The Miller Library has adequate parking spots. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
William Johnson, 1045 Madison Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Mr. Mayor, the Council. William Johnson, 1045 Madison Street, Beaumont, Texas. My complaint is debit card, bank fraud, and a whole lot of other stuff. I started dealing with this Chase Bank back in 2000. They sent me one of these. I went over there and joined up their club. I joined up, opened a checking account. When you open a checking account, you automatically, you know how automatic it is, but you get a debit card. I've been having this debit card from 2021 I started. I fool around, and I had one debit card, but I found out there was two or three issued out in my name. I got credits and debits here on my account that I didn't make. I go to my bank, talk to the president about it, and she says, "That's your PIN number," the way she put it. I got charges for Target for several to $6.00 and some cent. And the hard part about it is these charges. I got charges for HEB for $101. And I ain't talking about just one. I'm talking about many on my debit card, which I don't have. I have, but I don't have one. I have, but I don't have one, and these charges come in on my account saying that I did these charges. I go to my bank and let the bank, my president of my bank, understand that I'm not doing this. From there, I get a charge from Target, Super Walmart, and Port Arthur. Target again. I don't be doing this. I usually deal my credits on the first of the month. When I deal with any of these people, I have a tendency to pay cash. And ain't paying cash don't do no good. So I canceled the debit card. Not one, but two of them, because I was getting charges charged in my account that I wasn't doing. Two debit cards, counsel. I get another debit card. I got a debit card now that I don't even use because I can't afford to use the PIN number. I go to my bank president, complain. I even come to the police department and file complaints. I still don't get nothing. Now, these debits come to about $3,000, $4,000 offhand. Now, on the 2nd and the 24th of this year, I goes to my bank to do my little banking. I got--
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, I'll be back next week.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, City Manager, Mr. Mayor West, councilman, staff, and I'm glad to add citizens. I've been ignoring that because citizens are the reason that you're there, number one. Talked about an evacuation plan about two years ago, and I have not gotten anything on it. I went further than that to give you companies that could sound sirens across the area so that no citizen could be harmed or know what's going on. Because why could we even phantom barrel? It wasn't flood, it wasn't fire, it wasn't tornado, but we did get shut down with electricity. They did. I thank God I didn't. So I'm asking for an update on an evacuation plan for the city of Beaumont that can be heard across the city, along with Jefferson County. And Jefferson County says it's the city, so I don't know who it is. The other thing is sidewalks, and it's really amazing that other people are talking about it. On Maclean and Major, there's a corner where when the children walk, they're very close to a car. So I've addressed sidewalks, especially at Beaumont United, that have never had sidewalks in the front, but now they have gas stakes or gasoline stakes or whatever that's on that highway now. So I'd like to have an update on sidewalks. The children in Amelia walk in the street, which is a travesty. So, you know, I've read the ordinance, and the city is responsible. So where is the parity for both sides of the city? The other thing is horns. There's no horn signs in Amelia. Lately, in the last two weeks, they try to see how loud they can go. So I want to know if that can be addressed. We've done what we should do as a neighborhood association, so I'm bringing it to you. The railroad is out of control, you know, besides not cutting the grass, other than when they put up new stations. So I'm asking the city council-- My name is Addie Allen. You read my address, 9695 Gross. I'd like to know soon. And I appreciate your work. You have a lot of work to do. And bottom line, with sidewalks, Gross and Maclean had sidewalks at the same time that Calder did that had lights up and down the sidewalk. Those sidewalks are raised. If the kids go down the sidewalk on Maclean, they're going up and down, and kids do crazy stuff. You know, they child play. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don Dodd, 795 Willow, Beaumont, Texas.
Council, City Manager, Mayor. This is a new one for me. I would normally just write it in the newspaper, but we don't have time. On your agenda, you'll be voting on a budget that we have some concern about, not only as a newspaper, but as a citizen, as a taxpayer of Beaumont. The budget that was-- First, we tried to get a copy of it yesterday, and we were told by your communications office that it would be available after you voted on it. This is not the original budget that we reported on last week, but the second, or what was called an amended budget. I want to just share with you two things on the cover letter. The very first budget, I think, that was given to council supposedly in August, we didn't receive it. I think it was posted on the web two weeks ago. But in any event, on the cover letter dated August 16th, you can see here, there's no picture of the city manager. It shows a proposed expenditures of $331.7 million, a lot of money. Yesterday, or last night, rather, the second budget, or amended budget, was put online after we were told it wouldn't be available until after this vote. And it's the same letter with a few minor changes. One, there's a picture of Kenneth Williams on it. The second thing is, it shows the expenditures of $355 million, a difference of $23.7 million. Also, and these are just two major things, it shows on the second page of the number of employees for the city of Beaumont in Letter One. This, by the way, is the cover letter for a 200 or 300-page budget. It says that there are 1,360 full-time employees in the city of Beaumont. Letter number two, with Kenneth Williams' picture, says there are 1,421 employees, an increase of 61 full-time jobs. These are just two major differences. What is exactly the same, and we're trying to figure out, is that Budget One's cover letter was dated August 16th. The second letter, which was only available yesterday on the new budget, is also dated August 16th. These are major discrepancies on the dollar. Now, I believe a communication that went out 10 o'clock last night made some reference to the media misreporting on some numbers. I'm just going to finish this one thing. I can't speak for all media--
Mr. Dodd, we limited it to three minutes. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And now, we're going to-- Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. There is a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel to conduct a joint public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget and the proposed fiscal year 2025 capital program.
Yes, now we'll open the public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open the public hearing on the second.
Counsel to conduct a public hearing on the 2024, which fiscal year 2025, proposed tax rate.
All right, at this point, I open the public hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Deliberation and possible action to consider the ordinance adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the city of Beaumont for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30 of 2025. Adopting a master fee schedule appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations of the money to pay interest and principal seeking fund requirements on all indebtedness, repealing all ordinances and appropriations in conflict with the provision of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
Is there a motion for item number one? There is a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz?
First, I want to thank Mr. Dodd for your comments. And he raises some concerns, some concerns that I share. And as we're getting ready to vote to approve this budget, I have some questions. First one being, about these two letters, why is there a $23.7 million difference in the stated planned expenditures from the original letter of August 16th to the one that we received last week?
Addressed that, but as you know, from the first draft that we had, we made substantial differences in those budget documents. We edited, we added some projects, we deleted some projects. So there was substantial movement around of dollars and projects and things there. So-- And she can add to that, but I'm thinking that number had to change with all the changes we made.
Yes, that's correct. We did. We even added some funds that had not been in previous budgets, such as the Health Grants Funds and the TIRS Fund, which is new. And so some of those things had to be added to the budget to make it more readable. We also added capital projects funds in, which had never been in the budget before.
Okay, so you gave us kind of a cheat sheet to let us know the changes that were made. And you're telling me that this document that is in the cover of our binder that has this shows $23.7 million worth of changes in expenditures?
No, sir. No, this walked forward the general fund, the capital reserve fund, and the water utilities fund. But we-- The first version of the budget, we have put in the capital projects funds, we have put in the health grants fund, we've put in the TIRS fund. These are additional funds that were put in the entire budget. So that's-- This $355 million is all funds, not just general fund or capital reserve or water utility.
All right. What about the employees? The first letter said we have 1,360 full-time employees--
Correct.
And it's gone to 1,421, an increase of 61. How does that happen?
Because, I think, we had discussed this previously. We're using software this year. In the past, part-time employees were not budgeted. Two part-time employees equal one full-time equivalent. So when those full-time employees got added as equivalent employees, it upped the amount showing a number of employees in the budget.
All right.
So every employee is entered into this software at this time. It's more accurate now than it's ever been in any budget previously, because every employee, every benefit that they have is within this software.
Councilman Neal?
Thank you. I've got several questions. First, going back to the overtime line item for the firemen. So we've taken-- Last year, for the '24 budget, we spent $4 million in overtime, right? And so--
That's what we spent.
--per this budget we have right here in front of us, we've reduced that to $2 million in overtime. The question is, do we have more personnel in the fire department on October 1st to reduce the overtime?
We do have a few more, yes.
So how do we come up with a number to reduce it by $2 million?
Well, we get those numbers too. We have-- We get those numbers from the fire department, from the administration and management and fire chief. And as was spoken earlier, they've come up with a plan to reduce overtime. So based upon their plan to reduce overtime that we're going to hear later, we're going to be able to reduce these dollars for overtime, which was $2 million above what we had budgeted last year. And we've got to figure out a better way to manage and do that, rather than just do it with overtime without analyzing what we're doing.
And I agree. I agree $4 million is excessive. It does need to be reduced. But I don't understand how you reduce the number of man-hours per person for overtime without adding more staff to the equation. And so I'm saying that to say that-- Let's say you hired firemen today, and you put them on the force. How long does it take to get a fireman before you can actually put him on the street? Six months? A year? Something along those lines?
All right, can't answer that question.
So I'm saying that I think they were way underestimating what the true cost of the fire department is going to be for the 2025 budget. My next question, while we're on fire, and I've got several other questions we're going to get through too. Is there money calculated in the 2025 budget for the contract negotiations for the union?
We've made-- We are prepared to pay the union when we negotiate their contract. We've identified dollars to do that. There are no dollars in there at this time, but we have the dollars to pay them when that happens. And we've communicated that to the fire department.
So that instantly tells me that our expenditures for 2025 are going to increase based off of what we have in front of us today for the fire department?
Yes.
And per the budget that we have today, it's also a little bit less than $1 million less than we had for 2024?
Well, a little bit-- What we have today, it's a little bit less than actual. What we budgeted last year is more dollars for the fire department from the original budget. And once we look at what we're doing with negotiations and contracts, and it'll be about similar number, but basically that reducing overtime $2 million is the main difference.
But we're still $800,000 plus over the new year-end estimate versus the revised budget. All right, so now, since we're talking about revised budgets, if you go to the statement of revenues and expenditures for 2024, we're saying $47,591,191 for the starting fund balance.
What page are you on?
Page 19, the budget. I'm not going to reference the old budget because it's wrong. So I need a better understanding on where that number comes from. And I had a conversation with Ms. Sherwood earlier, so I think I'll let her answer that.
It comes from the audited fund balance--
Okay.
--23.
All right, so now you've got to transfer over to the July 31 financial statement. Does anybody have a copy of that?
I have it right here.
Okay. Where does that $42 million in the budget line item come from?
Because we started with the $47 million. There is a sales tax adjustment that is made every year, and last year's sales tax adjustment was $4.6 million, and that brings you to the $42,821,000.
So then, how do you go from 42 to the 47?
47 minus the 4.6 is 42.
Okay. So then, the next question is, is going back to the 2018 budget all the way to the one for '24, it's never that way. This is the first year I've found that it's that way, where it's the full accrued audit
Well, we have a different financial officer, and we have a different system of doing accounting. So--
What I'm saying, though, I think we have one extra month of sales tax in this number than what we need.
No, we don't.
So then, how is this fund balance that we get every month so much different than what we have? Is our fund balance right now in the account $42,821,488, less anything that's happened since July 31st? since July 31st?
The $47 million is the audited number. That is the correct number to use.
As of October 1st of last year?
Right. That is the beginning fund balance.
The question is, what do we have in the account today?
47 million, well, I don't know what it is exactly today, but it would be what was on the July 31st financial statements. $57,793 is the actual at this point in time.
Okay. All right. So while we're on the July financial statement, if you move up to the transfers in, you're projecting for year-end $500,000 versus the 3.6 million that's budgeted. And I think we all know that difference is the $750,000 for something. I don't remember what it was. You might. One was the long street and one was something else.
Well, that was the AT&amp;T building.
When is that money going to be transferred in?
Before year end.
Okay.
I've already got the journal entry written up on my desk.
So, and that's coming out of Streets and Drainage Project, right?
It's a transfer.
From Streets and Drainage. Okay. What's the fund balance in that account?
I don't have that on me right now.
Okay. It's negative $2.2 million before we do the other $2.4 million transfer.
No, it's not.
Then this isn't right.
We just received bond funds, sir.
Okay. But still repaying something back when we're already starting with a negative budget in there?
I didn't make that transfer. I was not who budgeted that transfer. That was budgeted last year. I have to make it because it's already in the budget.
All right. Go ahead.
Councilman Getz.
So we got this revised proposed budget a week ago. And Mr. Williams, I know how hard you and your staff have been working to get us these numbers, and I appreciate that. The bottom line though is that, and we all know this, budgets are a document that is going to be subject to change. We can do budget amendments, and we have done budget amendments for to reflect that. But as you go into a new fiscal year, you want to have a pretty good idea of really where you are. It's a time for reflection and measurement, and there's a lot of uncertainties that are in this budget, one of which Mr. Neal identified is the, there is no money in the budget to address whatever ends up coming out of the contractual negotiation with the firefighters. We know it's going to be something, we don't know what it's going to be. The contract negotiations with the firefighters, certainly it would be preferable to have that done before going into a budget process and approving a budget. Now, there's been accusations made by some in the fire union that the city is stonewalling budget negotiations. You know, I know from what I've been able to learn that the city had scheduled negotiations to begin July 9th, and that was actually canceled by the fire union. And then there's a email that said that the summer travel schedule of many of the members of the fire union were so difficult, it made it hard to schedule a new, new time to begin contract negotiations. So we know that negotiations are now scheduled for October 8th. I say that to say this. You know, I do agree with the fire union that there is an element of uncertainty when you don't have a negotiated contract at the time you pass your budget. And despite having been labeled a liar by one member of the fire union in this past week, thank you for acknowledging that, Mr. Henderson, and despite being told that I'm ignorant by another member of the officers of the fire union publicly within the past week, I'm neither a liar or ignorant. I understand what's going on. And I do believe it would be better for us to have a contract before we pass this budget. So with that, I'm going to ask that we consider delaying any expenditures for new positions or any salary increases, the 2% projected salary increases until after we have a budget, I mean, a contractual negotiation finalized with the fire union. And the reason for that is because that will, that will provide us a degree of certainty as to what we're looking at in terms of the budget process. So I understand today that we can make and request budget amendments. That's what I'm requesting, that we consider amending this budget to such time that we have a contract negotiated. And specifically what I'm asking for is for us to delay any raises, the 2% raises that are budgeted for employees, and to delay filling any positions until after this is done. That's my motion.
Councilman Turner.
Mr. Manager, Councilmember Neal asked some questions about overtime because that was a concern of mine when I first seen it come about some time ago, but we said we would go over it later. I just think before we move forward and make these decisions, we need to at least hear the plan of what we're trying to do, how we're looking to reduce those things. I understand you didn't say you were the one to reduce overtime and be presented. So I think it's important that we all kind of get on the same page on these numbers before we start moving into that direction that Councilmember Getz kind of suggested. I think we need to really hear everything and see what's all going on.
There is a motion on the floor and.
I'll second that request.
All right. So there's a motion and a second to approve the current budget with the amendment.
It's to amend the motion, to amend the budget to exclude the cost of living increase and additional allocated positions until after the fire negotiation contract is finalized.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Is that correct?
That is my motion.
So I want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding.
Okay.
So the two councilmember motions on the floor, we're saying all employees, we're going to put everything on pause until we get this specific instance addressed. So my next question is, before we even move that far, if this instance isn't addressed within a certain timeline, what are we saying to all employees? I'd rather talk about this before we move forward as if it can't be in existence.
Well, this is the time to talk about it. This is discussion. And to answer your question, we know that at some point in time, we're going to have to enter into a contract with the firefighters. And so, you know, at that time, we will be able to, once we've done that, we'll have some certainty as to what our expenditures are going to be in terms of the budget for fighters. And we can then address whether it is appropriate to, at that time, still do the 2%. Maybe we can do more, maybe we can't do as much, and filling these other positions. I'd love to see all employees be able to get a 2% raise, but I don't want to do it in an irresponsible fashion. We know that we're going to have to have more money come out of the general fund at some point. We don't know how much. So I'm just saying, let's, let's do this responsibly and hopefully we can get these contract negotiations started soon, get them finished soon. I know they're scheduled to start October 8th, so that's right around the corner. And then we can come back and revisit this.
Councilman Fellshaw, then Councilman Neal.
City Manager, I, I know that on page 19, it shows a deficit for this budget of 3.5 million. Again, just clarity, whatever we do with the firefighters will be added to that number if it's, if it's an increase. I'm not saying it is, but if there's an increase, that number will, will be impacted.
Yes. If you're talking about the general fund.
Yes.
Number, which, which is basically expenses over revenues. And definition of deficit, we always talk about that. So it would increase that number. It would definitely increase it, whatever it came up with the fire department. But I will say that our fund balance, which in government accounting is where we would get that money from, is, is way in above what it's required to be. And there's more than enough money there to cover the fire department's requirement and still be well above the required fund balance. So available dollars is not an issue. If, if you want to, if there's a principle to say that we want to do it because one group's not getting it, let's make the other group get it. Okay. But the dollars are there and so it's not an issue.
And I've heard different numbers. I've read different numbers. I think at one point, we, we made the statement, we've cut five people from payroll, but then I heard we've added 20. So did we take the five out of the 20 and there's only 15? Bottom line is, how many new employees are we adding with this budget?
I think approximately seven, and it might change because what, originally it was 20, but, but let me explain that. Some of those were positions that were part-time at first, already funded, and we took two part-time positions, made full-time positions. So there were positions in different departments, legal, fire department, no, I'm sorry, police department, not fire department, some other departments that that happened. And then we went in and we just cut some, we cut some out. So, and, and somebody who's looking at that can refer to me, but it's, we, it's looking at maybe five to seven new employees. It's not 20, there's not 70. It's five to seven new employees possibly. And they are not all scheduled to start October 1. Most of them are scheduled to start in March. And if somebody can tell me that.
I believe we ended up with seven new full-time employees. About half or better of which will start in.
Yeah, only about three or four was scheduled, four were scheduled to start October 1, and those are the real-time crime center people. Now, if you don't want the real-time crime people to start October 1, that's going to impact that. So it's only the real-time crime center people that are scheduled to start October 1 anyway, maybe one other position. So that's what you would be impacted by not letting those new people start.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm assuming this question is for the legal department, but talk about the motion in a second and, and what we're dealing with. How does that, there is state law when it comes to our budget and when it has to be approved and voted on and so forth. How does that impact this motion that's on the floor?
So, chapter 102 requires that you adopt a budget. The motion isn't to not adopt a budget. The motion is to amend the budget, so that really has no impact. If the motion was to deny the budget in its entirety, we'd be having a different conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Well, Councilman Neal, did you have something? And then we'll go back over to Councilman Duria, then Councilman Getz.
Y'all sure it's not 13 that we're hiring? Because we took, this sheet, the one-line sheet, we took five out, but it was 20. And I remember a couple of them moved, some of it was moving part-time to full-time. So I think it's 13.
I don't think it's 13. It's somewhere between five and seven new, net new employees. It's not 13.
Some of those were part-time, not full-time.
Councilman Duria.
And four of those are real-time crime center people that we need to start to work in the new real-time crime center.
What's, what's the amount of employees total that we have right now? They said, I heard a couple of different numbers.
There's 1,421 full-time equivalents.
Okay. So that would be, I guess, if you take the fire department out of that, that'll be what? 1,200 people left?
Approximately.
So we're going, I, I can't understand why we would put those 1,200 people on hold for their 2% raise if we know we're going to get this done. But, and if you wait until you do the contract, it's no telling how long that will take at all. No tell. I would hope that it would get done fast. We need to get the contract done with the fire department, but this part about holding up the raises of the other 1,200 and so, city of Beaumont employees, not, I can't, I don't understand why we want to do that.
And also, Mayor, we have about 235 police officers that we're obligated by contract to give a pay increase October 1.
Councilman Getz.
Well, I will amend my motion to exclude the police officers that are contractually bound if I could do that.
So your motion is fine. The motion only talks about excluding the cost of living increase, which is not contractual. So it would not hinder contractual obligations. However, it would impact the four additional crime center positions.
And I do want to talk about that for a second. I actually led a group from our synagogue to tour the real-time crime center this past Sunday. It's a fantastic facility that I support 100%. I think it's going to make a difference. It's already making a difference, and I am delighted that we have it. We do need to have it staffed more, but it was explained to me that the capabilities of monitoring the things that are happening are on the cars, car cameras of all of the officers so that dispatch can plug in to the audio and video of what's going on and the officers out in the field can see that in real time, even if we don't have somebody there at the real-time crime center. That's happening right now. I do think that the first four people we hire need to be, to staff that more. But I'm going to stand by my motion, and I do want to also thank the city attorney for pointing out that the motion I made is very different from a motion to not pass the budget. Members of the fire union have publicly called for us to not pass a budget, not pass a budget in defiance of state law until they have their contract negotiated. Ms. Reed, what would be the effect of the city not passing any budget?
So the city's fiscal year is in September 30th. So if there was no budget passed or in effect by October 1, it would be a government shutdown. So police and fire would still be required to, to show up for work because they have a clause that says they can't strike, but all civilian employees who showed up on October 1 would be showing up in a volunteer capacity because they would not be getting paid.
So let me understand that and make sure that everybody, you know, and this ignorant councilman completely understands what you're saying, that the firefighters wouldn't get paid, the police officers wouldn't get paid, the garbage truck drivers wouldn't get paid, nobody would get paid.
The city would be prohibited by law from spending any money. So, yeah, nobody would get paid.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Councilman Fellshaw.
City Manager, I must have been misinformed. If the council doesn't approve this budget, I was told that it would go back to the old budget automatically. That's not.
So there was a, sorry, a lot, but there was a provision in our previous charter that allowed for that. However, comma, chapter 102 doesn't give that authority to any city. And so there was a lot of, I guess, like legislation discussion that cities should not have a greater authority than the state of Texas in the United States to roll over a previous budget. And so chapter 102 is very specific. It says a city shall, a municipality shall adopt a budget before the end of their fiscal year, and that you shall not spend funds that have not been budgeted for. So it does not allow for you to have a provision in your charter to adopt your, to revert back to your previous budget. What it has is a provision that allows for cities to adopt a budget as outlined in their charter, as long as it does not deviate from the standards that are required by chapter 102. Chapter 102 is very detailed in that you have to adopt a budget, you have to adopt a budget in these particular ways, you have to do these things, these format, these, these cover pages, these postings. And so if you have a charter that requires for additional postings or additional discovery, you can have that, but you have to meet the minimum required of chapter 102, which is to adopt a budget. So if you do not adopt a budget today, you will be prohibited from spending funds on October 4.
That's the shutdown. Thank you.
Councilman Turner, then Councilman Durio.
To my understanding, since I've been on council, the council, we don't negotiate the union's contract, correct its staff, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, negotiation team.
Yeah, I want to make sure that's clear. We don't negotiate that. We just refine and approve. My second question is, council, we've been advised several times because of certain litigation and different things that it's in our best interest not to negotiate. While we're all in the room, I'd rather talk about it so we're all on the same page because I don't care to hide anything. We have been advised that. Am I not correct?
I'm not going to allow you to waive attorney client privilege. However, there were conversations in the executive session regarding council's options during the season. But one council person cannot waive attorney client privilege.
Okay.
And so I'm not going to answer any further questions about matters that were discussed in executive session.
Understood. I'm one out of one out of four. I understand that. My second question is litigation. Have we been in a lot of litigation or spending a lot of money in reference to litigation dealing with the fire union?
The city is currently involved in a in a lawsuit with the fire union, yes.
Okay. Do you have, do you know about how much we've dealt with since 2022-ish or 2021-ish or no?
Are you asking for specifically the litigation or are you also asking for arbitration?
Litigation, arbitration, the whole nine. Because again, we want to get this done. And before we get into putting everything on pause, I want to make sure we're in a position to get this done because I am concerned about these 1,200 other employees.
It would be in excess of 70,000.
Okay, so we we've done that in litigation. And back in 20, what what is our minimum requirement that we need to contribute to the pension? What is the minimum requirement?
12%.
12%. What are we currently at as a city?
Roughly 20%.
So roughly 20%. And most of the council members that's up here have promoted, have supported it getting to 20%.
Yes, so the contract, when we negotiated their their previous contract, it was, I believe, around 16%. And there were some amendments to the agreement that got us up to 20%. And those have to be by resolution of council. So yes, council was aware and did support that.
Yeah, my reason for saying that is saying it to the union while we're face to face and we're all in one room. We're saying that we didn't support, but I know I did support getting it to that 20%. I have no reason not to. And I just don't want to get into an instance where negotiation, we don't do negotiation. You just heard we were advised not to get into the negotiation. My second thing is, when it comes to, you know, business, leadership, unions, we need to be transparent. And it's been instances where it hasn't been the best relationship with council members and union leadership. And what I mean by that is even when it comes to not only the name calling of a particular council member, and we're talking about this. So, you know, we have a retired firefighter on the current council. And a retired firefighter informed this whole body that the union president said he wouldn't endorse any minority council members because none of the minorities were qualified. So I I rather.
That's 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 the truth.
He's right here to confirm that that was said to him.
That's the truth. And you were in there when he said it.
All right.
So that's my concern when it comes to getting business done and these other 1,200 employees being tied up into this.
If you if you said it, just man, just man up.
Let's just go, let's go back to raising hands. And we don't want to have outbursts from from the chambers. Thank you. Yes.
It's not accusations, it's the truth. Okay, I asked President Nissim.
Okay, so ma'am, we're not going to interrupt the meeting to have conversations with our officers. The mayor has not instructed anybody to be escorted out. But we do ask that all the individuals in the room adhere to our decorum policies. That means you only speak when you're at the podium. Thank you.
Councilman Durio.
It's 100% absolutely true. I asked President Nissim, why didn't he endorse any African American candidates? And he said, none of them are qualified. That was a conversation we had on the telephone. That was exactly what happened.
Okay.
You told me that you was in there with him. You told me that you heard him say it.
Chris.
Well, escort him out of here. He keep interrupting and he peak mad dogging people and stuff. Escort him out of here.
Let's let's get back to this subject right here.
Okay, I do, I want one more thing for the budget. I'm with, I don't understand, and maybe Mike, you can explain your reasoning as to why we would put those 1,200 employees on hold, especially since the manager said the dollars are, it's, you know, the dollars are there, including the fire department's contract dollars. That's all, it's there.
And Councilman Gess, before you respond, I'd like to respond that, you know, we've been working on this budget since since May. And these items have been, there is, you know, there has been numbers not carried over correctly. And we're getting that straightened out. But in terms of the 2% raise, in terms of the additions of the staff, those have been talked about. And there hadn't been any concern prior to this meeting. And I I'm just going to go on record, I support those. I don't want to penalize who has been. I I understand the funds will be there to negotiate the contract with the fire union. But upending the budget at this late date, I I don't agree with. And I just wanted to be on record for that.
So.
Councilman Gess. You'll go after Councilman Gess. Councilman Alderman, he hasn't had a chance.
In response to your question, Councilman Durio, again, I I agree with you that the 1,200 employees, especially in the inflationary times that we have experienced the last year, need a cost of living allowance adjustment, and I support that fully. I don't want to penalize anybody. But I do think that it is important to have an element of certainty as to what we're going to be looking at, which can only happen once this contract is negotiated. And this gives everybody a real big incentive to get this done really quick. And it can be done really quick. But, you know, if you have a lot of heartburn about the 2% raise, you know, I could be persuaded to amend my motion to eliminate that aspect of it and just defer the hiring of any new employees until the contract is negotiated. As you heard earlier, a lot of them wouldn't be hired into March anyway. That would impact staffing at the real time crime center. But I may, the motion is on the floor and at some point we're going to need to vote on that motion before we go forward.
Understood. Councilman Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't like intentional intent to create controversy, get us away from what business is at hand. At this point, because of all that's going on, I suggest there is a motion on the floor. I suggest we move with the motion on the floor, take a five minute recess and come back and take care of our business.
Councilman Neal, then Councilman Durio.
So I kind of understand where where Councilman Durio is coming from as well. The the one compromise I'd be willing to make is we can give all the employees that make less than $100,000 a year 2% raise. But everybody above that be tabled until a later date. There's a big difference between giving Mr. Kenneth Williams a 2% raise versus giving somebody that makes $15 an hour 2%.
So just for clarification, the employees that are under your direction, which include myself, Mr., the city manager, the city clerk and the magistrate, do not receive the cost of living increase in the budget. We receive it in a separate resolution if presented by council. So this only applies to ACMs on down. It does not apply to the, what we consider executive staff will be, which will be the employees that report directly to you. And the the reason for that is that we can't unilaterally give ourselves a raise. The city manager and his budget can give a cost increase to his employees. Y'all have to give a cost of living increase or a raise to your employees. So we are not included in that anyway.
But y'all four are not the only ones that make over $100,000.
Uh, no, they'll pretty much be all of your department directors.
Okay. Man, also, Mayor, and we've spoken about it many times. And as Councilman Turner said, it has been a bad relationship with the leadership of the fire union. But we've also said we will not hold that. I know myself and some other councilmen said we will not hold that against the union as far as the contracts go. We want to get that done. That that really, that got ugly and kind of personal, but it's not against the union at all. Of course, we know that the contract needs to be done. I wish it was done already, I really would. That wasn't just on, uh, that that was a, that was a personal thing, really. It got, it got personal and it and it got ugly. And but anyway, I just want the union to know that we, we want to get this contract done and we will get it done. Despite the relationship that we have with some of the leaders in the union.
And Mr. City Manager.
May I just say that all of our employees are important, whether they're fire people or police department or civilian employees. So it it, I don't want to separate them into different groups and start dealing with them as different groups. They're all people, they're all important, they all have families, they all have needs and they all have wants. You paid for a compensation study last year that defined how this is to take place. It defined the different groups and how they're to get paid. It, there's a three phased approach, we're in the second phase of this year to pay additional dollars to lower paid employees to get them up to a higher pay or mid range of pay. Those dollars are in this budget too. So they have already been compensated to get them up to lower paid employees. The 2% is basically a cost of living. You know, we've got to be able to recruit professional people. And 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 I say professional people, you're not going to get professional people for less than $80,000. We got to be able to retain professional people, you know, that can go somewhere else to work. And then we're in a position to find them. I really don't want to get in a position of separating people into categories and saying we're going to pay these and not pay them and have a tremendous morale problem. Here's the city with our employees. I'm I'm for all of our employees, I'm for all of them to be compensated fairly. And I think we have a, we presented a fair plan to you to address compensation for all levels of our employees. I'd ask you to consider the plan we submitted.
Yes, and Councilman Gess.
Councilman Durio, if you were, or maybe this is more for Councilman Neal. If you're asking if I would consider amending my motion to only include those employees making over $100,000 a year and defer that until after the contract is negotiated, I would be willing to entertain that as well. Mr. Williams, I understand, I certainly consider you important and every department director is important. But to Councilmember Neal's earlier point, there is a significant difference between someone that is making a six figure salary and someone that is making $15 an hour. It impacts those people less that are making, you know, big money right now. But if anybody wants to amend that or suggest that I amend that, I would consider that.
Well.
Support that request.
Before we call the vote on that amendment, I'm I'm going to restate that we have had since May that we've discussed this. And we we hadn't expressed this in this council and the 2% raise that, you know, we've invested in our real time crime center, those additional hires and penalizing all the other employees because we don't have a contract at this point. I think it would have been a whole lot more appropriate as a council that we, you know, we'd be doing that rather than two weeks before our budget. I I support the current budget being presented and I support getting a contract as soon as possible with the fire union and adding those funds. But this has been something that is not new, that we've discussed it at every budget workshop that we've had. So these these are new, I understand. And if it's new information, that's fine. But otherwise, I just think it's time for us to vote. And yes.
I don't think it's fair to say that we've had this budget since May, though. I mean, even as of last week, it changed drastically because it was just flat wrong. So I mean, we've literally only had this for a couple of days.
But the items that we're talking, in terms of the pay raise and in terms of the additions to, those aren't new. And in terms of the finances, I think, I believe that they are correct now. And I understand that there were carryover problems from the software and also change of personnel. And I've gone through that in business and perhaps that's one reason I can look at it through this lens, going through two different times where our business was bought and we had new software changes. And it created challenges in our finances and we would deal with them as they came up. But we still went about the business of that. So I have experienced changes and I don't believe that there's any any wrongdoings here. I just think that we had, we had, how we did our finances, that program, software program actually changed. And we got new personnel. And as a result of that, we had some missteps and those have been acknowledged. But right now, what the actions we're talking about as a council will have impacts on 1,200 other staff people within our city that I think are doing a good job, showing up every day. And I don't want to penalize them for that. So that's my opinion, but I am just one of the seven votes.
And Mayor, just, I need some, maybe someone with historical knowledge can help me with this. Before we take this vote, to hold back the pay increase until we get a contract, wasn't there a time that we went into what's called evergreen with the firefighters and trying to get a contract negotiated? And how long did that last?
So there is an evergreen clause in both the fire and the police contracts and evergreen lasts for one year. So on September, when their contract expires on September 30, it would go into evergreen and that will last or could last until September 30, 2025.
If no new contract.
If no new contract is negotiated. There has been years where they have gone past their evergreen and they worked without a contract.
So I just think as a council, we have to consider that. How long could this last? We don't know. So that's that's a consideration. And and I I would like to see a contract today as everyone else. And I'm not, and City Manager, and you and I have talked about this, and he's been so gracious to meet with me one on one, him and his staff, and answer my questions. But I I don't like the fact that we're under the water by 3.5 million and we don't know what that contract's going to do to us. That makes me very uncomfortable. And I understand we have the money and the the fund balance. But again, I I do not believe that we should be operating off of that money. That's that's like a savings account. We should work within our budget, revenues and expenditures. But with that, with that said, I I'm not happy with the budget. I want the contract. But just everyone, remember, you could be a year negotiating. Before we vote to withhold the cost of living raise, just know you could be looking at a year.
Councilman Samuel.
Mayor, I call for the question.
All right, so we we stand, can we restate that so we can make sure we know?
You got it, okay. The motion is to amend the budget to exclude the cost of living increase for anyone, for any employee making over $100,000 a year and to exclude positions, additional positions until after the fire union contract is finalized.
That's accurate.
All right. All those in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May need a hand count. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. All right, that motion fails. So now we go back to, yes.
I move that we adopt a budget for operating municipal government of the city of Beaumont for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and ending September 30, 2025, adopting a master fee schedule, appropriating money for the various funds of the budget. And that is my motion that we, is on the floor.
As it appears on the.
On the agenda, yes.
All right. Sarah, we have a second for that already? Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, there is a second. There is a, any discussion on that?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Councilman Neal.
I just want to go on the record that it's misleading and wrong and I won't be supporting it.
All right. Councilman Gess.
It's, it's disappointing to have to vote on a budget that we have had really less than a week or about a week. You, you know, we've been working on it a long time, but the numbers have shifted so dramatically. It's, it's hard to support because you're really going on faith here. And there's been a lot of things that have happened that has caused my faith to be shaken. I, um, I mean, I understand we have to pass a budget and I'll support it, but we need to do better.
And I, I think we have learned from this experience and understand we can amend the budget. Every council meeting we have. I mean, that's certainly not a wise decision, but to imply that we can't amend it going further, I just think penalizing, uh, everyone else after going through the discussions would be inappropriate. So with that.
Can I have one question? Why, why is there no way that we can negotiate this, start negotiations earlier? Is that October date firm and the earliest?
Yes.
Why can't we negotiate it today?
I'm busy in council.
All those in favor? This point, I call the question. All those in favor of, uh, approval of item number one as read, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Most.
Motion is carried. Let's get back to our agenda here. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor.
May we have the reading of item number two?
Counsel, consider resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025 capital program. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
So move for approval.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Any discussion? Councilman Getz?
I'm looking on page 291. Capital projects expenditures. There's a line item that says fix up the buildings. Can somebody explain to me what that is? Which buildings and what are we talking about?
That's been an account name that's been in there for a long time. And it's just, uh, essentially, um, facilities maintenance. I didn't name that account. It's been there for years.
So where, how much are we proposing to allocate? One million, one hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred dollars?
This capital projects. Yeah, we're not, we're, this is budget item and we're talking about the, uh, is that capital program?
This is a capital project.
What page number are you referring to?
291.
So these have to do with, uh, the bond-funded projects. This has never been in the budget before. This is part of what we added to the budget this year. Uh, but it does refer back to the CIP and it's going to be the, athletic complex, I believe, and the pickleball court.
No, ma'am, I'm not talking about the parks portion of this. I'm going to ask about that in a minute. I'm asking about the line item that simply is labeled fix up the buildings. No buildings are identified. I don't know what you're talking about here. That's what I'm asking for.
The riverfront park restoration and the Colliers Ferry Boat Ramp and Pier. And the reason it's in that, we, we had no accounts to put that into because this is always added new to the budget this year. So it's probably not a very good account name for that particular thing, but that's the two things that it, it's the remainder of the, the riverfront park restoration and the Colliers Ferry Boat Ramp that's on your CIP on page five, middle of page five.
Give me a second to go back to page five.
And that's what it's called in the CIP plan too?
Again, the, the CIP was never in the budget before. So we had to make, we had to use the accounts that we had existing within the account code structure to put those into, and that was the closest thing that that could go into.
I believe we've had the CIP as part of our budget.
No, sir. We've had the CIP as a standalone document. We, this year is the first year that it's ever been a part of the budget. It was never included in a budget before. The capital reserve fund was, but the CIP was not.
Okay. You're saying never before, we've never had the capital improvement projects in our budget book?
There used to be capital projects, but they were just a list. They were not in funds. They were not in accounts.
Councilman.
They were only a list.
Councilman, if, if I can remind you, that was probably one of your biggest, um, criticisms with previous administration is that, um, we would have a capital programs list and you would say that y'all approved it and you would want to know why those projects wasn't moving forward and it was because those items weren't budgeted for. So our capital projects list was never really formulated inside the budget. Just to recall your attention to one of your biggest criticisms.
Thank you.
Of previous administration.
All right. And in terms of, um, parks and property maintenance, uh, there's construction, a line item listed, um, 1.5 million dollars. What is that for?
That's the athletic fund complex.
The source of that fund is from bond money or?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
That, that one's the parking lots and then I'll probably mangle it, but Engelbrecht Drive, um, that's asphalt, uh, for those.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, all those. Get back to my. All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, the motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three, please?
Counsel, consider and oughtn't as accepting the appraised role, appraised role and approving the property tax rate for the tax year 2024, which is fiscal year 2025, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Okay, so there needs to be. We have to do this in two phases.
Yes, this is where we kind of have the script.
Right.
And they need to be record votes.
Somebody want to make this motion?
I move that the tax rate, uh, property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 659663 cents per 100 valuation, which is effectively a 2.4% increase in the tax rate. The tax rate is 2.18 cents less than the current tax rate. That is 2.99% above the 2024, no new revenue tax rate.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second, uh, for the first step in item number three. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We're going to do a record vote, so we can call for the record vote.
That's what I meant to do, call for the record vote.
Mayor, Mayor West?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Durio?
Yes.
Councilmember Getz?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we have the next vote.
I make a motion that we take a record vote on maintenance and operations rate of 0.487643 cents per every hundred dollar valuation.
Second.
We've got a second, so now we need, any discussion? Need a record vote for that?
Mayor West?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Durio?
Yes.
Councilmember Getz?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have a final vote for item number three. Somebody would like to make that motion?
I make a motion that we take a record vote on the debt service rate of 0.172020 cents per 100 dollar valuation.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? May we have a record vote, please?
Mayor West?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Neil?
No.
Councilmember Durio?
Yes.
Councilmember Getz?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into item number four?
Yes, Mayor. Counsel, consider and ordinance ratifying the budgeted property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2025 budget, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five?
Counsel, consider and ordinance amending the fiscal year 2024 budget, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number five?
So move for approval.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? Councilman Durio?
Um, can I just, for myself and for the public, can we explain why we're doing this amendment to the 2024 budget?
Yes, sir. We generally do one, um, towards the end of the year to, um, amend anything that, you know, um, has changed throughout the year of any consequence. Um, and these are basically some of the transfers that we just had to change the amounts of the transfers for, so that's, that's really all this is doing.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six, please?
Counsel, consider resolution approving the write-off of uncollectible delinquent accounts, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve. Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number six. Is there any discussion?
Question, Mayor?
I have a question too.
Councilman Neil and then Councilman Turner?
So what else can the city do to collect this money?
Basically nothing. We've already done everything that we can do. We do have a collection agency, um, but at a certain period of time, you know, there are just things that have to be written off.
But like the weed abatement, we can't put liens on people's properties?
Oh, we do.
All this amount, we have a lien for?
Yes, we would have liens on these, but most of these, um, either, you know, the property's already gone, the people are deceased, different situations, it's uncollectible at this point.
Thank you.
Because we do everything we can to, to collect what we can.
Councilman Durio, then Councilman Getz?
So what is the benefit to the city of writing these off?
They are totally uncollectible. There's no need to, you know, continue those on our books anymore if we're not going to be able to receive them at any time.
It, it accumulates as bad debt on your books and when your auditors come in and that number starts to get increasing, get high and higher, it's, it's a negative for city to have that balance get too high. So at some point you need to write it off.
Right, that, that's what I was going to add, that it, i- i- if you have a bunch of, uh, bad debt on your books, that it's a problem for your auditors and possibly for going out for bonds too. The biggest component of that is, of course, the ambulance charges. Uh, 242,000 dollars of this is for EMS charges that, um, you know, the people, uh, could not pay and we could not collect.
Councilman Turner, did you have something?
Yeah, that was my biggest question. This bad debt, could it affect, you know, potential bond ratings in the future? I know we're moving in a upward direction. I just want to make sure what some of the issues we have in right now budgetary wise, we're doing everything in our power to make sure not further.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we do everything we can to collect the debt before we'll write it off, I promise you. We even have ways of collecting from, uh, certain, certain people who couldn't pay. We get, uh, charity care and we get payments actually for those, but these are ones that we've just been unsuccessful in, in collecting, you know, over the years or, uh, again, possibly someone's ceased or, you know, there's, there's various reasons why they need to be written off.
Thank you.
And in some cases, even though you write them off, you still don't stop trying to collect the money. You, you want to get the money in, but at some point you need to get it off your books.
No other discussion at this, this point? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager? May we have the reading of item number seven?
Excuse me, Mayor. Counsel, consider resolution approving the write-off, oh, write-off of uncollectible water accounts, I'm sorry, totaling 91,829.1 cents for which each individual account exceeds 1,000 dollars, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
All right, is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval for item number seven. Any discussion, Councilman Phil Shaw, then Councilman Neil?
City Manager, I'm understanding correctly that some of these numbers here like Best Western, Jefferson Inn here in Beaumont, 4,700 dollars.
Beaumont Housing?
Beaumont Housing, 8,500 dollars. And then isn't there a Plymouth?
Village.
Village, isn't there apartment complex? These, how can we not collect the, the, these monies? And how can Beaumont Housing Authority not pay their bill? These are the individuals I get, but I'm struggling with these. I mean, we know where the hotel is. Can we drive over there and? Or can we cut their water off?
That was highly unsuccessful when we tried to do that in the past.
Well, I mean, because I'm, we're not talking about a hundred dollar water bill.
No, but we're talking about individual citizens who live within those complexes. You can't just shut their water off. So, um, these range from, again, the dates of April 22nd through March of, uh, uh, 2022 through March of 2023. So these are, sorry, a bit old, but, um, you know, we do what we, we can to, to, uh, collect. I am going to, uh, look into some further ways that we might be able to collect these that haven't been done in the past, but, um, for now, these are ones that are going to need to be written off at this point.
And what I, and I, I don't mean to lay this at your doorstep. I'm not
No, I understand.
Holding you, you know, for accountable for this. I just, I struggle with it being who they are, not individuals, but these are businesses open here in Beaumont.
Right, I agree.
And we're not, and so to all the other businesses that may be watching online, please pay your bill because we're not going to allow you to accumulate a big bill and skip it. I mean, uh, it, these are just some large numbers of not individuals, but businesses that I don't understand. I just hope all the other businesses don't catch on. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Neil, then Councilman Turner?
Yeah, I was going to kind of send the same thing that Councilman Phil Shaw did. A lot of these are people that I think just about everybody in the council knows. I don't know, this is kind of surprising.
Yeah, and I share the same concern, Councilmember, that a, an existing business would carry such a thing and, and we need to, we'll put some things in place to see about getting that money.
Can we turn this over to our attorney's office and let them go collect it?
Oh, in-house.
In-house.
Oh. I'll let her speak.
So there's some very specific utility requirements for when you collect on, for non-pay utilities. In the past, our department has not always billed in accordance with that statute, so it may not be feasible to collect all of them because we hadn't billed properly. But sure, I like a challenge.
Some of these, I'm 100% confident would pay. We would just let the right person contact them. Councilman.
My concern is some of these businesses, specifically businesses that are still operating, you know, like they still have residences, some of these apartment complexes, they're just still operating and how they operating with this tab.
I can't speak to that historically, but you know, sometimes it's, it's the public outcry when you turn off an apartment and it's full of people, you know? I don't know the circumstances, and I apologize, but there are certain things come up, and you know, next thing, we're a news story on the evening news when we do things like that, but we need to collect these dollars.
So for the apartment complex, especially in a complex where it's all bill paid, let's just say we all live in Unit A, B, and C, we all paid our water bill. Units D, E, and F didn't pay. So we've all paid our water bill, and y'all didn't pay, but they shut off the entire complex. We have a problem. If everybody in the apartment complex paid their water bill, but the apartment complex didn't pay the bill, and we shut off the water, the residents, the citizens, they paid, and so they've been done a disservice. So it's really hard when you have a situation where it's apartment complex and they're paying the apartment complex, and the apartment complex isn't paying the bill for you to shut off. You can't shut off the water for a customer who's paid. The citizen has paid, the business has not.
Understood. I kind of support you reaching out and see what we can come up with.
Councilman Phil Shaw, then Councilman Durio.
Well, two things. Number one, I'll yield to the point on the apartment complex, but the hotel, I mean, I'm sorry, 8,000 bucks? I'm struggling with the hotel. I don't, that one, I've got a problem with. And I hear you, City Attorney, that some of this billing may be because, or this, some of these monies have accumulated because of the city's failure to bill correctly. Is that right?
So in the, like some utilities, for example Lamar, they have to be billed. The law requires that they be billed on a 30-day cycle. That's not always how we bill.
Okay, so just to follow that with, I'm assuming we've identified the problem, we've corrected the problem, so we're moving forward, we're going to?
I'm not confident seeing yes to that.
Okay, then I'll defer to the City Manager.
We have someone here who probably can address it.
We've addressed the 30-day billing for the state agencies. We, our system does not allow to bill for like 30 days, 20 days. So what we've had to do is create a process where we have all of our state agencies on, they're running a spreadsheet. We run that every morning, and anybody, any state agency that gets a late charge or that's going to get a late charge, we remove that before they even get billed. That was the issue with the state agencies. They were getting billed late charges, and they shouldn't be.
So like, are you referring like to Beaumont Housing Authority?
It was Lamar University was the big one.
But is Beaumont Housing Authority in there?
To be honest with you, off the top of my head, I can't remember.
$8,500 and another line, 1,500 bucks, so that's, that's $10,000 they owe us. I'm just curious, you know, how that is allowed to go, because this isn't my money, this is the money of the citizens. We all know, it belongs to the citizens of Beaumont, but they're, you know, that's $10,000. I'm just curious, is how we let that?
Well, now, I was looking at that, this was my first year to fully do the write-off process. Last year, I kind of grabbed it at the very tail end of it and just kind of got it together. I didn't get to really look into the process. Ms. Ray and I talked previously about seeing about going into collections with these things like we do some of our other city accounts, so they can be tracked down, and we can start reclaiming revenue. Now, they go to the write-off status, but if any of these people ever make application for service again, that money goes, gets transferred to their active new account. But if there's some out there that have, just don't have active service, we can certainly look at that, and we can, you know, transfer that money over to another account.
But we're getting ready today to write this off, right?
Even if it's?
So a debt against the city never expires. So even though you go, the write-off process, it's really sanctimonious, it's ceremonial, because at any time, we can collect the debt. So even if you write it off, if you agree to write it off today, and then next week you tell me to go sue somebody, I can still do it. A debt against the city never expires.
This is a housekeeping issue as the prior one was.
Okay. Go get the $10,000.
Okay. I'll do my best.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Durio.
So we kind of, I don't know, publicize the list, as they say, put these people on blast?
Yeah.
Let everybody know, hey, these people owe, especially if they're local people. Just let them know that they owe it, or can we do something like, like the police do with traffic tickets? They have an amnesty deal where if you come in and pay, you know, just collect something. Maybe if they thought about a program like that.
We haven't, that's what, we were kind of kicking things around this year to try to determine how we can come up and actually recoup some of that revenue.
Also, I see on here it says if they have a, you said if they ever got another account, that balance will transfer over, but on here it says they can't get another account till they pay that money that they owe. It says a customer with a written-off account would not be able to obtain new water service.
That's correct. There are some circumstances where if they, like if it's a $5,000 bill, we'll say, if they want to pay half of that upfront, we'll recoup that revenue and then transfer that remainder to their account, let them get service, because at least we're recouping some revenue and let them pay it out, you know?
Well, that's something that y'all keep an eye on any time a new, y'all have records of that, I guess, anytime somebody comes for a new water account.
Yes, sir. Anytime someone applies, we search the system for their name, and if they've got a write-off, it pops up, and it gets transferred over.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Getz.
Like Councilman Phil Shaw, I have some heartburn over Best Western having their water bill written off, same for Knife River, Lucite, and Beaumont Housing Authority. And I'm gonna make a motion that we write off everybody's except those four and give us the opportunity to go back after those four.
But for clarity, we can still go after any of those.
I understand, but it's, even if it's symbolic, I don't want to write those four off, and I'm making a motion that we write all the rest of them off and have those four that we can look at. And if it comes back, we have to write those off later, then we'll do that.
Is there a second on that?
Well, Councilman Getz, I started to bring that up, and I'm glad you did, but to simplify, because we, can we just say anything above $5,000? We just, we ask them to go after, or do you want to keep it to them, just?
Well, those four are business entities that I think that if we just make a phone call.
Okay, so it's businesses, not individuals, what you're targeting?
Right, those are Best Western, Knife River, Lucite, and Beaumont Housing.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
So can I ask legal questions? Is that something we can, we can do?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to confirm.
Yes, but as the mayor was mentioning, and I know that Councilman Getz, it's just the principle of the matter, the approval of the resolution or the ordinance as written doesn't prohibit the city from going after those accounts.
I understand.
We're clear on that.
Yeah.
And if I may, Mayor, I'd like to come back with an agenda item to where we can discuss this and give council an update and talk about how we can collect these items and get them, get them resolved.
Yes, sir.
Well, and I guess the reason for my vote is, is understanding what you're saying, City Attorney, but for me, I think what we're trying to say is this is not a recommendation of the staff, but this is the will of the council. There's some teeth into this. We're saying we want you to definitely go after these four to recoup the money of our citizens.
Since Mr. Manager wanted to come back with an agenda item on this deal, wouldn't it be smart for us to table it until he does that, and then we could decide?
I guess budget-wise?
We need to.
So can we call the question on my motion?
So there's an amendment on the floor to specifically write off all accounts except for the housing authority, Best Western, Knife River.
Lucite. And Lucite.
And Lucite. So according to council rules, a motion on the floor and an amendment is offered, the amendment shall be acted on prior to the main motion.
So this is the amendment to, this is to amend the motion, it is not on the motion?
It is to amend the motion, and so you, we have to vote.
To amend the motion, all right. So at this point, all those in favor of amending the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Now we can act on the motion unless anybody has any other discussion. All right, all those in favor of approving item number seven as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. All right, Mr. City Manager, may we have a reading of item number eight?
Council consider granting a new solid waste transportation service agreement, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
All right, is there a motion for item number eight?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval for item number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number nine?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number eight, accept maintenance, and authorize found payment to King Solutions Services, LLC, TX, for the pipe bursting work order contract phase three, and that comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number nine?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 10?
Yes. Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for the pro-housing pathways to remove an obstacles grant through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
All right, is there a motion for item number 10?
Move to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number 10. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Durio.
Yeah, who would be eligible to receive these funds, and how would they have access to them, to apply for those grants?
Yes, sir. So if we were awarded by HUD, we intend to go out for up to $7 million. If we were awarded, it would go through the RFP process, so they would be able to bid on it.
So this is for like developers?
Yeah, so we're putting it in for, and I can actually invite Jess Prince, Community Services Manager, up. She did the bulk of preparing the grant application.
Can you repeat the question, please?
I was, I was wanting to know who would be eligible to receive this grant, and how would they be able to access those funds?
So the city is an eligible entity to apply. We would put out to RFP most of the application activities. Those include production and development of affordable housing, as well as homeownership. We also have a line item in there for development of affordable, local affordable builders and developers. So all of those items would go out through our formal procurement process.
Okay, and they, that's, they would answer to the RFP that y'all put out?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I do want to mention, we are not listed in the prioritized geography for this. We were still invited to apply, and we still know that we need to address affordable housing in our area, so we will be, if you approve, but we are not on the priority geography list.
So we was awarded this, and somebody was interested in it, they would need to contact you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, they'd contact procurement, actually, but I'll be working with them on the RFP.
Thank you, Jess.
How did we find out about this, this grant?
We receive grant information from Capital Edge on a regular basis. We also heard from one of our local Chodos, Legacy Community Development, was interested in this opportunity as well.
Okay, and the Chodos, they've assisted in getting grants with HUD before and working with, through that process, is that correct?
They receive grant funding from us and our home fund. We have a 15% mandatory set aside. To my knowledge, we have not partnered on any grant applications with them in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor. The discussion. All those in favor of approving item number 10, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Council to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the 2023 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, a caper.
All right, the public hearing is open. Anybody signed up to speak? All right, the public hearing is closed. All right, would you please take us into the work session?
Council to review and discuss the downtown code enforcement update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
All right. Well, a lot has happened since our last presentation, and if I'm being honest with you, it's been challenging to illustrate all the progress, especially when you drive downtown and it feels like nothing's going on. So my hope today is to share the key details regarding our progress and the proactive downtown code enforcement program. And there's quite a bit of information here that I'm gonna show you, but I'll guide us through as efficiently as possible. And as always, feel free to stop me with any address if you want more detail or clarity on. Next slide, please. So we'll start with the Gilbert Building. What you're looking at is a complete snapshot of the last six months with this building, which obviously includes the area in red, which are those items that are directly related to the fire. On August 20th, just to remind everyone, council met about this property specifically, and we walked away with really five things to be watching for. First would be mobilizing to the site. In the timeline provided to us, this was set to happen on September 2nd. Permits were pulled on September 12th, but as of today, this morning, we have not seen any activity there. Next, there were three conditions, which I've highlighted for you on this slide. It was condition three that had the quickest deadline, and as of today, the barriers have not been paid for. Condition two is the progress report submitted to our office, and so we will be watching for that and continuing to update you there. And then obviously, condition one is the primary goal of ensuring this building is structurally secure come January 2025. And then the fifth item would be November 18th, if you see that on that timeline there, which will follow the clearing scope we were provided, and the owner will need to make a decision if he's gonna proceed with the restoration scope. This is set to happen around mid-November, and we will certainly be monitoring that. And then I'd like to point to one more item on this slide that staff will be following up on after the structural job is complete, and that is ensuring that we don't have an unsecure vacant building, which falls under the definition of an unsafe structure when the restoration from the fire is all said and done. Obviously, I can't get you a date on that at this time, but our office will be diligent as we move forward from the completion of one goal to the completion of our original goal.
Wait, before you move on to anything else, I just want to understand, the owner of this building has not yet paid for the barriers that the city had to erect, and he was told to do that by August the 30th, is that correct?
That is correct.
He was told and agreed in council.
It was a condition of the ordinance.
Yeah.
And so if he's not done the very first thing, then where are we with the rest of the ordinance?
This isn't an agenda item, so we can't act on it, but it is.
I understand, we can't act, but I just want to know where we are.
Again, you see the three conditions there at the top. Again, listed as three, but the one regarding the $12,320 owed to the city was a condition of the ordinance, and he has not paid that, the owner has not paid that as of yet. As Mr. Hanson mentioned, though, they did. though, they did come in September 12th last week, and they have pulled a permit for the demolition of the interior, additional survey of the interior, again, to move towards the October, November decision as to whether or not they want to move forward to shore up the building. But to answer your question, they have not, they have not complied with that condition number three of the ordinance.
Well, Chris, why are we issuing a permit when, why are we saying, wait a minute, we're not going to issue a permit? You haven't even complied with the first condition of paying for the barriers.
Staff does not want to deny the permit. Staff does not want to impede progress, but again, it is, it is a concern.
Yes, I agree it is a concern. What are we going to do about it?
We could bring that up as an agenda item.
Yeah, again, this is a work session, so if council indicates they want to rehear it, I guess we could look into bringing it back to y'all.
I'm going to ask it to be put on the agenda for discussion because, you know, we're just kicking the can down the road here. You know, I've said all along that I don't expect that there's going to be anything materially done with this building. If you can't even get past the front door to pay for the barriers, which he agreed to do, I'd like to see it back on the agenda.
Yes, Councilman Neil?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty simple. Put it on the agenda for the next Tuesday meeting, and if he hasn't paid by then, the deal's off the table.
Fair enough.
Yep. All right, if you continue?
All right, next slide, please. So this is probably the most cluttered slide we're going to see today, just because of the amount of addresses that were in phase one, but it's fairly easy to follow. What you're looking at is phase one in total, and all the addresses that we tagged in that initial sweep. So 175 days ago, we tagged these buildings, and so you can see the status of each building every single day thereafter. I owe you an explanation on a couple of these addresses, so bear with me as I give you that. The first thing I want to point out is 515 Fannin, 340 Bowie, and 495 Orleans. So those are the ones with the green 150 days there. And I heard you loud and clear during our last presentation, so I just want to point out that as soon as that 150-day work program expires, we're filing in court. I know it's not the repairs that we all hope to see, but we are taking each building through the process and following up as soon as we're able to do so. Second, regarding the old workforce building, due to the building's owner not securing the building, including repairing the broken windows following last year's fire, the city of Beaumont is having to move forward with paying to board up the building. We are securing firm bids now, but preliminary estimates were at $50,000 or more. While we would prefer that Mr. Flanagan pay for this significant expense, the city has no choice but to move forward with this work and expense. And we did include that money in the FY25 budget to cover this expense to board up Mr. Flanagan's building. Third, you'll notice that Hotel Beaumont has been in the monitoring stage, that gray bar, for the entire time. And Mr. Patel has been extremely transparent with us through this process. He met with us almost instantly on site. We've had pre-development meetings with real plans. That's huge to point out, real plans. And he quickly took additional measures to secure the building. It's, is it where we want to be? No. And that's where our vacant building registry comes in. So November 3rd will be 60 days since you approved that ordinance, so come November 4th, we will be following up with any vacant building to register at that point. And then lastly, I'll point out 900 Calder, which is the old First Baptist. It currently, I currently communicated with the, or excuse me, that owner is currently communicating with our Economic Development Manager. I spoke with him just this morning on some openings, and he seemed extremely motivated to work with her and see that building occupied. So again, not what we hope to see, but the building owners are being responsive to a large degree and working with our staff to move forward.
Councilman Getz?
Very encouraging to hear that Mr. Patel has got some actual plans with regard to the Hotel Beaumont, but he's owned that building for a few years now, and not much has happened there. Do you feel that these plans are something that he's serious about, or is it just something on a piece of paper somewhere?
They're real plans. They're engineered plans. They're legitimate. Now, how he moves forward is going to be up to him, but I have seen the plans, and they are, they are real.
And my understanding too is that the cost of money had effect on that. Now, that doesn't mean he's going to do it, but there was, there was a change in interest rates as that was being approached, which made him pause.
Next slide, please. So phase two was a little less congested and fairly straightforward. What you see in 441 Orleans and 448 Orleans, I think is a pretty good report to give you. They were unresponsive for a period of time. We began the filing process, and then permits were pulled. That's really what we want to see. Now, actually making the repairs is another thing, and as of this morning, I have not seen any repairs made, but when a contractor pulls permits, we consider that a step in the right direction. Again, we're going to continue to monitor all these addresses. Next slide, please. Phase three is similar to phase two in terms of numbers, but also has a few addresses that should be pointed out to you. First, 336 Orleans. We were not able to file charges because when we went to do so, we learned that the certified mail was never delivered, nor delivered back to us. It was simply sitting in a limbo with the USPS. So we've caught that now, and we're, we've sent new letters to the property owner so that we can be sure they are notified appropriately before we move forward with our process. And then next, 846 Laurel. If you look at the key provided at the top, you'll see something that wasn't on the previous two phases. We're running into some complications there with this address, which allowed for a 90-day extension before we filed. However, since then, a contractor has also pulled permits to get started on repairs, which is a good thing. As of this morning, though, repairs have not begun, but a permit has been pulled for that address. So good report there. Next slide, please. Now, I know I just ran through a lot, so at this time, I'm happy to circle back to any specific address or any details that y'all want to cover.
Councilman Turner?
Just can we get a copy of the report? Outside of that, I think good job on the update. You know, you said it was cluttery, but I followed you and understood well, so good job, though.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your work.
Good job.
Thank y'all.
All right, at this point, we're to council member comments, and I will start with Councilman Neil. Councilman Samuel? Councilman Philshaw?
City Manager, thank you and your staff, the CFO, for all the work you did on the budget. I know it's, it's convoluted with both general and enterprise. It's over 300 million. When I look at the budget, I get a headache, and so I can just imagine what you and your staff have gone through and trying to work out the details, and I appreciate all the hard work. Again, I've been very open and transparent with you about my feelings about the budget. I know that we have a different approach when it comes to it. I'm more of that simple approach of revenues and expenditures, cash in, cash out, and trying to balance that. And so I just, I wanted to make sure that, again, I expressed that to you because I did cast a no vote, but you continue to have my support, you and the staff, and I do appreciate all the work you do. It's just, this is that one time where we agree to disagree, and I'm looking forward to the future, and perhaps the day when we have that, what I call a zero budget. And I know you want the same thing. I know that. You desire the same thing, and I've heard you. As I've mentioned to you, though, in private or with the staff, my concern is not so much do we have the money, my concern is developing a trend, and that trend worries me. So again, thank you for all your hard work.
Councilman Turner?
Mr. Williams and staff, just want to thank you. When I first got on the council, I consistently asked for a compensation and salary study. I was told that we had one, but we didn't have one to the magnitude that we do have now. And in that study, we found out we had employees that were on the low end, that were making around $7.33, and now we are up to our minimum wage being around $15, so that's a huge jump, you know, with the economy and what's going on right now for the people at the, towards the bottom. You know, I was told we had to have a low man, but I feel like that low man has to, or that low person has to have a quality of life as well, and it's important we as a city identify and recognize that. We want to take care of everybody, but we just can't forget about the everyday people who go to work as well. So in this compensation study, in this budget, the people who are behind on salaries, to my understanding, has already been implemented in the new budget that we are on track outside of the 2% correct?
This year is the second part, second phase of a three-phase approach, three-year approach to get people up to, up to minimums, I guess, compared to other cities and stuff. So yeah, we're well on our way. Last year, you put more money. This year, we put more money to get those lower people. Everybody's over $15. We got there last year, matter of fact, with that last year, so it's well on the way. We will be looking at that again and tweaking, and we have Carmen, a new HR director, in here, and has a bit of difference in philosophy, so we will be looking to evaluate that third year.
Yeah, and another question was with the 2%, just in the future, you know, I know in your evaluation, when you first came, we kind of talked about employee evaluation. I think it's great we give it straight across the board, just some positive feedback. So staff members, and I'm talking about particularly in the higher positions, have goals and things that they actually want to hit. So are you still kind of open to exploring that?
Oh, absolutely. Well, I have a first draft. It came from the city attorney's office, and her, her staff gave us a first draft of evaluation, a program for the employees. We're kind of shifting that over to HR with Carmen with her experience, and so we'll be implementing that this year, and we'll be able to have accountability with employees and pay and benefit increases as it's, so we'll be, hope to come back with you this year with a report on how that worked out.
And even in the salary compensation, we had some of our upper positions, department heads were, from the report, basically on the higher end of salaries. Some of the department heads are no longer here. Did we adjust new salaries or new department heads coming in, or did we keep it at the number that we originally, was it adjusted a little bit based upon the compensation?
At this point, you know, we had some long-tenured people, and of course, salaries get to be high with long-tenured people, and we've hired some people in those places. And not to say they don't have the value of the previous people, we have adjusted those salaries, so we don't have all those high-end salaries that we had two years ago. They've been adjusted, adjusted to market valuations and not as high, those top ones are not as high as they used to be.
Yeah, and I think it's just important, we did the report, we're going from the data on the report, and I'd just like to see things and contracts and negotiations just get going, and everybody taken care of, and we can move forward. So I appreciate your time today. Another day, like you said, is like making sausage when you, when you first came, and you've been in some intense situations, and just want to compliment you on your, in your tenure, and you know, how you're doing, and you're just kind of moving through it. In politics, we sign up to be in some of these tough positions, and I've learned, you know, it's very tough, but you got to be able to have thick skin and keep moving and do what you were put here, which is the best interest of the people. So thank you.
Councilman Getz?
Councilman Turner, thank you.
I was at the Beaumont Municipal Tennis Center this past weekend and noticed a lot of activity on the covered courts, and it's because they were having a big pickleball tournament. It was a charity event. They brought in people from out of town to participate. They had food truck vendors there, lots of music, lots of fun, lots of activity. It convinced me that at the neighborhood association meeting that we were having the next Monday night, that we should have somebody come talk to the group about pickleball. So we had Dr. David Stovall, an avid pickleball, pickleball enthusiast, come and address the group, and he explained to us where the name pickleball comes from. Does anybody happen to know? So the guy that invented pickleball for his children up north, found a wiffle ball and some ping pong paddles and was starting to play with it, but their dog, named Pickle, came and took the ball, and it became Pickle's Ball. And that's where the name came from for pickleball. At any rate, we adjourned the meeting and went out onto the courts at Rogers Park, which has been striped for pickleball, and you can still play tennis on it, too. But we had a little pickleball match out there, and although I'm a tennis player, I'm proud to say I did pretty good at pickleball. So, you know, I might have to expand into that repertoire, Mr. Williams. It's a game that people have had their knees operated on can probably play, so you might want to take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Getz. Councilman Duria?
Uh, yeah, just two things. Mike, I actually watched pickleball on TV. I think they had some type of tournament last week. It kept my interest for about 10 minutes, but it was during a commercial of a football game, so I had to go back, but it did look interesting.
Was your interest kept up longer than the basketball?
Hey. No matter how bad it looked on TV, I was there, and it was a lot worse in person. Especially if we paid for the tickets. And also, I just would like to apologize for my earlier outbursts. Should have controlled it better than that. That's some of the things that we go through sometimes. But one thing, I'm not taking back anything that I said because everything that I said happened. That's the truth. I don't get up here and lie. I tell the truth, and I just want to apologize. I think that was kind of unprofessional, and hopefully, I'm not going to promise, but hopefully, it won't happen again.
Thank you, Councilman Duria. Madam City Attorney?
Yes, sir. So I do want to start by first correcting some statements. There was a comment made that there are 17 vacancies in fire. Twelve of those vacancies are from the 12 new positions that you got council voted to add in accordance with our plan to buy attrition, add additional positions. So 17 of those 12 are new positions that were newly added to the fire department. We also have a test coming up in the near future, and I believe we have 30 people signed up to take that test. So there has been some recruitment being done by the city in conjunction with the fire administration to, to get additional individuals in. Also, Councilman Neil asked me a question as to why we couldn't do negotiations, for example, today. Well, the fire negotiations are public meetings, similar to council meetings, so they are required to have a 72-hour posting notice, and October 8th was the first available date for all the parties to start to get it done. Contrary to popular belief, it doesn't, contracts aren't negotiated in a day. They take a while, both because they, even though the union is the, the primary bargaining unit for local 399, they also have to bring it back to their members to determine whether or not that's going to be acceptable to them. So when they make a proposal, it's been discussed among their members. They present it to the city. The city takes that. We work it amongst ourselves and staff, make a counter. There's several back and forths. All of those meetings are public. All of those meetings have to be posted. State law gives us about 60 days to come to an agreement before we reach what's called an impasse, so hopefully that doesn't happen. But there is some consideration given to that, that typically, just using our last contract with police, it took about four to five meetings before it was, it was settled, and there were some, some gaps in between that. So the average negotiation takes around a month or two. So that being said, also, there was a conversation as it relates to the ordinance pass on the Gilbert Building. Every one of the ordinances that the city passes is a law, and in section five of that ordinance, it says that any person who violates any provision of this ordinance shall, upon conviction, be punished as provided in section 1.01.009 of the Quota Ordinance of Beaumont, Texas. So the ordinance does have a provision that's available, both to staff and to councils, should you choose to go that route. And that's all the business I have. I do want to congratulate our events facility staff on Viva Fest. It was an amazing event. There was something for everybody. I loved the little, the little girl dancers, and they even had Mexican wrestling, tacos and beer and margaritas. So it was a very well-planned event. It was really fun, so hats off to Director Emily and her staff on a great event.
Thank you. Public Works Director? Assistant City Manager Boone?
Yes, just like to echo those comments. Congratulations to Emily and her staff at Events Facilities. Great event, and to all the departments who made that possible.
Assistant City Manager Ellis?
Yes, I just want to comment on the Beaumont Botanical Gardens. Today, Ms. Beetle and Ms. Crutchfield gave their comments about their request. They did meet with staff, and they did request a larger amount than what we approved in the budget, but like any department that submits a request, we do have to consider the city's available funding, and that's what we did this the city's available funding, and that's what we did this time around by providing them $18,000 for next fiscal year. And I did let them know that each year, we will consider their request for funding for the botanical gardens.
Thank you. Our CFO.
Just wanted to thank staff for preparation of that grant application that y'all passed today, and thank you for your support. Also, thanks to Bo and the building official, and also supportive staff on the code sweep. They're working very diligently on this, and you'll expect us to come back October 29th with the next update.
Thank you.
Just want to thank finance for all of their hard work on our budget. You guys worked really hard, and you do a great job, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. City Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, I had the great pleasure of stopping by the tennis tournament, I don't know what it's called, Mike, I forget the name, yeah. And I really enjoyed it, spent some time out there and got to watch the players play, and got to watch Councilmember Gibbs play. That's pretty good for the old guy. Probably, I can't beat it with my knee right now, but he does good. But I really enjoyed it, and it was good for the city of Beaumont. We had people from all over out there, and so it was a pleasure to watch that. And also, the Viva Fest, I enjoyed that this weekend. Two things, budget, thank you, thank you for your patience. I know this was a rough year, rough document. I will just give you my word and staff's word that we will closely monitor this document this year to make sure that it's good and that things are correct. You know, things were rough, so we will closely monitor it, and then next year, we will, we will not have these type problems, assure you. But I thank staff for their hard work. I know it was a challenge, tremendous challenge for Cheryl and her staff, but we've got to do better, and we will do better on that budget just this next year. And lastly, I'd just like to address the fire department. We are getting ready to negotiate with the fire department. Our fire people are very important to us. All of our public safety people are very important to us. This council has done a tremendous job of taking care of the needs of public safety in Beaumont, and that's reflected in the budgets that are here. So we want to continue to keep that work going to make sure we work closely with them to get things done. And me as a negotiator, and Sheri and us, we want to take the ideals and the goals of city council and sit down with them and come up with something that's a win-win situation for all of us here in Beaumont. We're eager to sit down, we're eager to get it done, you know, as soon as possible, so we're just excited, and I just want the city of Beaumont to know that the city is eager to work with our public safety people and fire department to get a contract done with them. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, and I want to thank our staff, and certainly everybody that stayed here, which most are city employees at this point, but for this meeting, and certainly thank all of our council people for their hard work and their review of this budget process, and as, not to go over, but you know, it was a messy process, but it was a new system and new people, and I think I have confidence that we will be successful in this, and we do get financials every month, as well as council people, that we're able to review each department and stay on top of it. You know, and, and I realize that when we do dip into our general fund as our savings account, that we have sufficient of. I don't think anybody likes doing that, I don't think anybody from management likes to do that, but as a city, we, we have to look at the future, and I'd said in the past, cities don't retire. They die or grow. And so we have to manage our resources and, and we have to, you know, if we have confidence in our managers, which I do, we trust them, and we move through on that process, and we continue to adapt budgets as we need to, to, to meet that. And I know that there will be challenges, but I believe that we're up for it, and I do believe in economic development is the way out for Beaumont, because we have to generate more revenue in order to solve these financial problems we're having. We are not going to be able to tighten belts sufficiently to solve our problem, we're going to have to grow. And, and I believe that we have a plan, and we're going to continue to work on that plan, and, and I'm excited about being, us being able to do that. I think it's, it was just six days, seven days ago, that Governor Abbott was in town because we were concerned about Francine, and we rapidly sometimes forget how quickly things change. Also, on that same day, we, ExxonMobil had unexpected release, they had an upset in a unit, and although their release did not go above TCEQ standards, as it turned out, at the time that the upset occurred, they were concerned about it. They reached out to our EOC, which we were all there, because the governor was also there, because that's where the press conference was. We issued a shelter in place, which we understand causes great concern for people that are receiving that. And we've met with ExxonMobil on Friday, and, and we're going to continue to work with them to be better at the notification process, is also in terms of getting out the maps. So this is a learning process, and certainly, when unit upsets occur, those are unexpected. That's the very nature of them, and this was, this was that. On a very good note, Lamar University beat the 20th-ranked team in FCS this Saturday, and I know myself and Councilman Samuel were both there to see it. It was a great day, and our defensive line did an incredible job of stopping them. And now Lamar University, for the first time in the history, is ranked 22nd in the FCS, which is incredible, and Lamar is doing very well. And I know Viva Fest was a lot of fun, I enjoyed it. The large piñatas were cool, the band, the dancing, the food, everything was wonderful. And on another note, we have a community-wide cleanup coming up this Saturday. BISD is having one on Friday as well, and Dr. Shannon Allen and I will continue to speak at churches in this Sunday. It will be St. Andrews Presbyterian Church. So with that, the meeting is, we are now recessed into executive session. Thank you.